Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty Spirit, as we review our city business agenda, give us your guidance and allow us to deliberate in an open and congenial manner. We have just celebrated July the 4th holiday and our independence and freedoms that are afforded us. Continue to allow us to enjoy these freedoms and many more as we grow as a community and nation. Again, our nation has suffered needless shootings with the loss of lives and injuries in Howland Park, just like Uvalde, Texas. Heavenly Spirit, reach out and touch all involved and give them comfort. Can we have a moment of silent prayer and giving for these grieving families? Heavenly Spirit, guide us with answers to these tragedies and let us all live in safe communities. Protect the people of the Ukraine. Give them the strength to continue their fight for freedom. Protect the Americans being held by Russian government and get them home, safe and as soon as possible. Support our nation as we have to solve many issues that affect our daily lives. We ask for all of this in your holy name and let us all say, amen.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution of certification of the closed meeting of July 6, 2022 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law and only such public business matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams?
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
We now move to approval of the minutes from the January 5, 2022 work session and regular meeting. What is the pleasure of council? Motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
We do have one special presentation this evening, a proclamation in recognition of Parks and Recreation Month. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor members of council, tonight's proclamation is in recognition of Parks and Recreation Month, which extends during the month of July and is served throughout the Commonwealth and the nation. With us this evening to accept the proclamation and to provide some remarks is Suffolk's Director of Parks and Recreation, Mark Furlough.
Thank you, City Manager. July is Parks and Recreation Month, and this month, Parks and Recreation will be celebrating Parks and Recreation Month at several of our standing events like our TGIF Friday Night Concert Series, and we'll also be doing a movie in the park at Cypress Park on July 16 to celebrate Parks and Recreation Month. We're very happy that we have a proclamation tonight.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the proclamation?
Whereas Parks and Recreation's programs are integral parts of communities throughout this country, including the City of Suffolk, and whereas Parks and Recreation Departments encourage physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote a healthy lifestyle, and whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education, after-school programming, and youth sports, which are critical to childhood development, and whereas the United States House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the City of Suffolk recognizes the wellness, economic, and social benefits derived from Parks and Recreation's resources. Now therefore I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. In witness whereof, I have a hair on to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed to the sixth day of July in the year of our Lord, 2022.
Thank you.
All righty, at this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. If there are any items that members of City Council wish to remove from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. A motion would now be in order. What is the pleasure of council? Councilman Williams?
Move for approval to accept the agenda as written.
Motion for approval from Councilman Williams. Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, please prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Madam Clerk, are there any agenda speakers at this time?
There are no agenda speakers, Mayor.
Right. Madam Clerk, will you please present the items for consideration?
Item number seven, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia 911 Services Board Public Safety Answering Point Grant Program for the Suffolk Police Department. Item number eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate fiscal year 2022 to 2023 Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program funding from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. And item number nine, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept a deed open space easement over the common passive open space within Phase 3 of the Cluster Subdivision Platform for the Preserve at Lake Mead. Tax map number 25, parcel 69*69A*PT34*6, account number 252-846-000, FSB2022-00006.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor members of council, in regards to item seven, the city has received $3,000 from the Virginia 911 Services Board FY23 Public Safety Answering Point Grant Program. The funding will be used to support the Suffolk Police Department 911 Communication Center to educate and train the city's communication operators. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by 3,000. There is no local match required. In regards to item eight, the city has received an award from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in an amount of $953,912, which is comprised of $488,891 in Community Development Block Grant Program Funds and $465,021 in House Investment Partnership Funds. The funds will be used to support the FY2223 Annual Action Plan. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund by $953,912. The required 25% local match for the home grant will be achieved through in-kind contributions provided by the home grant recipients. In regards to item nine, under the cluster development use pattern, passive open space shall be preserved as open space by conservation easement, which complies with the Virginia Conservation Easement Act. It is recommended that the city accept a conservation easement for the common passive open space within Phase 3 of the Cluster Subdivision Platform for the preserves of Lake Mead located off of Pitchkettle Road.
If there are no questions about the items, a motion is in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Goldberg?
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, well, next move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is to receive public comment on a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the non-exclusive master lease agreement with the Southside Network Authority. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Mayor, Vice Mayor members of council, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Dr. Charles Kerriaco, Director of Information Technology, will provide the staff report this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Thank you for having me tonight. Excuse me, the Southside Network Authority Non-Exposure Master Lease Agreement is required in order to begin construction of the global ring, or the fiber ring in the region. I'll go to the next slide. So, just a little history. So, the history here is November 2019, the authority was created by all five Southside cities to procure, install, a fiber optic regional ring. In February of 2022, the actual participation agreement was executed with the Southside Network Authority, and their goal in this whole ring is to provide lower costs, faster service, enhanced broadband coverage via the regional connectivity ring. And just for, you know, where the ring is going to run, the Phase 1 is in these five localities, a large portion, of course, many miles in Suffolk, from northern Suffolk, southwest Suffolk, to downtown and across our major corridors, back to Chesapeake and other cities. The purpose of the ring is not to compete with our ISP broadband providers for the city citizens. It's actually to provide connectivity for major connectivity between municipalities, between other industry partners, if deemed appropriate, and so it is not a competition with the ISPs like Spectrum. It's additional capability. So, the design's been completed, so they're ready to start digging and putting in conduit across right-of-ways in all five cities. In order to do that, there has to be a non-exclusive master lease agreement because they're outside entity than the city, so they need that authority to use our right-of-ways to start putting in this fiber ring across the region. With that, I'll open it up to any questions from the council members, Mayor, or the public.
Okay, we'll have the public hearing first, then get back with you.
Any questions from the council members, Mayor?
Yeah, we'll have the public hearing first, and then if there's any questions, we'll bring you back up again. So, don't go home yet.
Right. Okay, yes, sir.
You go sit down.
Thank you.
I wouldn't you pass it out on us either. All right, before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the topic system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? The first speaker, please come forward. Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. A resolution has been presented for council's consideration, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. Go ahead and move for approval. This is the part that we need to get moving to get this ring started, so it's with pleasures that I ask for approval of this tonight. This ordinance.
Okay, a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I want a second, and I also want to wish the doctor well coming on. I think this ring is very important to us. It helps the whole region, industry, businesses, everything will come from this, and hopefully we'll get some great connectivity from it. So, I want a second, Mayor.
Can we get a second from Councilman Goldberg? Is there any further discussion of the motion? Questions or comments? Hearing none. Council members, please prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion's been approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to staff reports. We do have two staff reports this evening. Our first one is a capital projects update. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor members of council, this is going to be a three-part presentation by the Director of Capital Programs, Public Works, and Public Utilities. Gary's going to lead us off, and I believe Robert may be second, and then Paul third, but it gives us a great opportunity to tell you the status of several of our projects and refresh you on some of the activities that are going on. Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As always, I enjoy providing an annual update on what's going in the city as far as capital projects. We have a lot going on and a lot of progress going on, so we'll get right into it. Let me start with one that we've recently completed, the new Parks and Recreation and Police Joint Ops Facility down on Carolina Road. That project, just a reminder, was just under 24,000 square feet of operation space for Parks and Recreation, the Police Department, and capital programs. They've all moved into the facility or in the process of moving to the facility, starting back in April. This is just some photos of the basic layout. You see some of our equipment bays there. On the lower right-hand side, you see some of our material storage areas. The next project we have is the Venice Creek Recreation Center. I think last time I talked to you about this, when I had a long discussion about some of the, all the issues we had going on with this project, and I'm proud to say right now, we've gotten past those issues, and we are making some great progress on this project. The project, just as a reminder, is just under 16,000 square foot renovation of the former Armond Reserve Facility out on Venice Creek Park Road. The project is approximately 70% complete, and like I mentioned before, the project has had significant delays and challenges from the standpoint of bad soil conditions, bad site issues, all kinds of things we uncovered in the building that had to be corrected, engineered on the fly to make them all work. But we've got the thing back rolling and that things. If you go by that now, you see quite a bit of progress going on, and we get to the point, to the point, we're closing it in right now. We'll actually be starting up HVAC systems next month, so that's where we are. Right now, the project is scheduled to be complete in December of this year with an early first-of-the-year opening. Here's some photographs and a rendering. What you're looking at right there is the front entry. That front entry, looking at the top left-hand corner, was a source of a lot of delays. That's a completely new entry design, and it was all steel. Well, the steel on this project had to be fabricated, and it was about 16 weeks past overdue I'm getting on site, which held up everything that followed behind it. But as you can see, it's moving forward. Here's some photos of, and a rendering of some of the spaces inside. In the lower right-hand corner is the games room, once it's complete, how it will look, and then up our left-hand corner is construction of that games room. This is the front entry lobby and reception area. One thing I'll point out in this design is you'll see from the rendering you saw of the main entrance and this, you start to pick up on a kind of a nautical theme. This project has a very strong nautical theme based on where it's located, and the original building lent itself to picking up on that with all the sail kind of features on it, you'll see, and the color schemes that we picked out. So, I think it's going to be a very festive site when you get a chance to see it. This is a photo in the upper left-hand corner of the fitness center under construction, and the lower right-hand corner is a rendering of how it will look when it's all done. One thing I'll point out, although this project has had some downspots in it from the standpoint of getting things moving, it has a lot of features that I think I want to point out that it's hard to afford if we had to build this building from scratch. This building has a lot of volume, a lot of natural light that would be very expensive to build brand-new if we had to. So, outsider challenges it has, has given us some good things also, and I think it's going to be a space that's going to be very, very enjoyable and make us all proud when we actually venture to space. The next project is the new Fire Station 11 up in, you all know it from the CAPCIP processes, the College Drive Station, but it's located right there on the site that we purchased at the entrance to the Code Shopping Center adjacent to the Arby's right there. And it's for design and construction. Councilman Fawcett, over 21,000 square foot four-bay station, which will be our largest standalone station, and it also will include a community room, Councilman Ward. The design is about 65% complete. One thing I want to point out, and I want to thank the Deputy City Manager, Kevin Hughes, for this. He worked hard to secure approvals from the adjacent property owners for us. As part of a covenant we had with them, we had to seek their approval with our design before we could move forward because we had to ensure that we wouldn't negatively impact their view shed or their view onto their property, onto their retail properties, and they all, and thanks to Kevin's hard work, they all signed off on it, and we're moving forward with that. The plan is to solicit bids this fall and take about a year to construct and be complete in the fall of '23. Here's a couple of renderings of what it will look like. Once again, our largest standalone fire station. Cypress Park Pool Upgrades. Now, I'm going to date myself a little bit here. I was here, I came here when we did the original renovation of Cypress Park Pool. Councilman Bennett will remember that. That was back in 2000, and it's due for, we've done another renovation. This one will do quite a bit to expand the project. It's construction of the existing pool expansion to add a zero-entry feature, a poolhouse and deck renovations, and new water features. Construction is about 65% complete. However, we've had some setbacks on this one from a scheduling standpoint, mainly due to supply chain issues, getting materials on site on time. That's been a real challenge for this. Even this small project has been a challenge, and some of the unforeseen site conditions we've had. Construction completion was originally scheduled for Memorial Day. Obviously, we've missed that, but we're looking, hopefully, if things continue to move forward, we can get this thing opened up in August. It's going to be a limited swim season, but we're trying to get it open as quick as we can. Here's some photos of a couple of weeks ago on the construction. The lower left, the lower right-hand corner picture, you see the large stoned area out front there. That's the area before it's been concreted. That's going to be the new expanded water features deck. And up in the upper corner left, you might not be able to see that, but that's the zero-entry component of the pool. That will allow the small kids, folks with disabilities, anybody with any physical challenges, a safer way to enter the pool and be able to utilize the facility. The Fire Department Fire Apparatus and Quartermaster Facility, which is the under construction behind Fire Station 6 or Kingsfolk Public Safety Center, if some of you know it, on Kingsfolk Road. The project is for a new 7,200 square foot apparatus and quartermaster facility to house fire and rescue vehicles and equipment, along with the quartermaster's office and a storage space to centrally receive, properly store, and distribute fire and rescue materials and supplies. The project is under construction and about 65% complete, and is scheduled to be complete in November of this year. There's a few pictures on the construction. These were a few weeks ago. Since these pictures have been taken, all the brickwork is on the exterior is complete, and they've actually started putting the standing seam metal roof on the building, so it's moving along very nicely. This is interior. This is one of the large vehicle bays that's under construction. Commerce Street Parking Lot. You've been hearing me talk about this little small project for a long time, but it's had an interesting roller coaster life. It started out as part of our, when we were looking at festival park locations at the courthouse some time ago. It started out as a part of that. I got put on pause a bit as we abandoned that particular project from the standpoint of locating a festival site, which I'll get into in the next project. into in the next project. We have a new location for festival sites, so we decided to go ahead and proceed on with this parking lot. We, it's for the upgrades of the existing Commerce Street Parking Lot. It will actually add 17 new parking spaces by building new parking spaces on the spot where the old Assessor's Office was. As you know, that was demolished some time ago. Bids were received just last week, and we are evaluating the bids as we speak, and we'll expect to proceed with a contract and notice to proceed next month. And we're looking at 90 days of construction, so by the end of this year, we're looking at having that complete. And speaking of festival park, Festival Park, which will be located at the intersection, the intersection of Saratoga and West Washington Street, is for a new home for festivals, live music, holiday events, and markets in downtown, and to create a new community living room. This park could deliver up to 100,000 additional patrons annually in the downtown to support our restaurants and retail and services. The park design is moving rapidly. It's about 90% complete. Just last month, we received our Certificate of Appropriateness from the Historic Landmarks Commission to proceed forward with that design. And we will solicit bids for construction this fall and look to be open for our first events in the spring and summer of next year. And the Central Library, which you're very familiar with, which is adjacent to the festival park. Just a quick update on this one. It's, design is moving forward. As a quick reminder, this is just under 38,000 square feet of two-story new facility to be located on West Washington Street. The design is in what's called a design development phase, about to move forward into the construction documents phase. Design received our Certificate of Appropriateness in this past December from the Historic Landmarks Commission to proceed forward with, with the design. Bids for construction will be solicited in early 2023 and will be finished and open in spring, summer of And this is a couple of graphics on that. So once again, you see the floor plans to the left and right on the lower side there, and the site plan on the upper left. And a couple of renderings. And one thing I want to say about these two renderings, very similar to what we've done here at City Hall as far as the way we treat our entries. We don't really, we have large facilities like these, and we like to have not a front and a back, but two fronts, two entrances you can enter from either side. One thing that was a big push for this one was to not only have a big entrance on the, from Washington Street, but also to have a strong entrance from the neighborhood side so that it brings folks in from the neighborhood side as well as from the, from the street side. And with that, I'll bring Director of Public Works forward, Mr. Robert Lewis, to give you an update on some of the public works projects.
Good evening. And we'll bring you quickly up to date on a lot of our highway projects. So one of the comments I'm hearing quite a bit around the city today is everywhere I look, I see orange cones and barrels. That's actually a good thing. That means we have construction going on. There's quite a few projects that are in design, and we'll work our way through the ones that are in construction and completion. So a couple of these, you guys have approved in the past through council actions as a traffic operations center that will be added to Carolina Road at our operations, our roadway maintenance center right there. We're beginning to kick that off. What that will be, we will be centralizing a lot of our electronics that allow us to manage our cameras, our traffic signal controllers, and remotely manage those. And that's getting ready to start. One of the things we try to do with the state every few years is we get funding from them to go around and start re-timing traffic signals. The thing about a traffic signal is you put a new timing plan in, and it instantly starts getting out of date. And that's something usually every five to seven years we try to do, and one of those is coming up. Spates Road Spillway, that's actually on Turlington Road. That's been through a couple of iterations. The Department of Utilities and the City of Portwood was trying to decide whether they were going to replace the spillway, do a whole new spillway. At this point in time, we're not real sure, but we're moving forward our project to replace that bridge. Freeman Mill, it's Spivey Swamp. Again, that's another, one of our bridge projects under the state of good repair. We are hoping to have these plans towards the end of June. So we're getting ready to put those out to bid. Pittman Town Road over Mill Swamp, again, another one of our state of good repair programs. We're at about 60% plan review, back to the consultant, and again, expecting that to move forward pretty rapidly. Shoulders Hill Road, the multi-use path. That comes from Shoulders Hill Road back down to the Deerfield Neighborhood. Again, the plans are finalized, the IFB is under review, and we're trying to finish up a couple of things with the utility companies, and that should be going to bid very shortly. Nansen Parkway, Wilroy Overpass. Again, we're still coordinating with the utility companies out there in the railroad, but we are in the process right now of acquiring the right-of-way necessary for that project. So that project is moving forward. At this time, we're anticipating putting this out to bid somewhere towards the last of this year, first of next year. Cridon Road and Route 17. Again, we are acquiring right-of-way, and again, quite a bit of that has been acquired. Again, one of our biggest challenges is coordinating with the private utilities, the Dominion Powers, the Verizons, trying to get them to relocate because they're just like everybody else. They're challenged to find contractors and do this work, but that is moving forward, forward. Nansen Parkway, Bennett's Pasture, they're in front of the high school. Again, the plats are complete. We're starting to get ready to go out and meet with the property owners and acquire those necessary easements and right-of-way necessary. And again, that's probably about a year out from going to bid. Pewsville Drainage, that project is ongoing. We have actually already started making offers to property owners. And in fact, I made the, I signed the first piece of paper this past week. We bought the first property in there for the BMP pond. So that project is moving forward. Nansen Parkway over Beaman's Mill, that's on Nansen Parkway there, just close to the school. Again, one of the things we had to do is a, a reach out to the public. And in this particular project, we're going to do what's called a posting of willingness in lieu of having a public hearing, because we just don't think there's going to be a lot of comments on that. But we're getting ready to do that. Pending not having any comments that we can't address from the public, that will be moving forward. And again, that's a state of good repair. Long Street Lane over Summerton. Again, we've sent a number of comments back to our design engineer, trying to finalize that project and get it ready. And Pitchkettle Road, intersection and road alignment. We are coordinating with the utilities. And I believe the next action on your agenda tonight is to set the public hearing coming up in two weeks to, so that we can move forward with the acquisition of right-of-way on that. So that project is moving forward. Projects that are in advertisement, Turlington Road at Kilby Creek. Again, we're putting that one out, getting that out very shortly. Pruden Boulevard at Prudence. That's actually been one of our challenges. That's out at the Vote Technical Center. We had anticipated that project would have been under construction and probably close to being finished by now, by now. But with the changes in the economy and all the supply chain issues, we ran into a budgetary hiccup, and we had to get into the new budget year for the, our new capital plan to kick in so that we have enough funds. At this point, we're getting ready to re-advertise that, and we anticipate there's enough funding in the budget now with the new CIP to make that, be able to move forward. But again, we'll keep you apprised of how that is moving forward. Again, there's a number of paving programs that the state participates with us every year. It's called State of Good Repair. Again, there's five projects that's in the fiscal year '22 program. We're waiting on VDOT Central Office to give us their final review in concurrent so that we can move ahead. There's six projects from this past fiscal year. Again, we have issued, finally got all the approvals from the state, have issued notice to proceed, and you'll start seeing brands come paving out, paving a number of our higher-speed highways with that money. Carolina Road at Cypress Swamp, good news. I was out there just the other day. They are pulling the bridge deck and the parapet walls. Again, it's anticipated late August, early September. I told the mayor to tell everybody September, we're going to actually should be finished in the end of August. And again, that road will be back open. East Washington Jericho, again, we have awarded that contract, and we're just now waiting to do all the final issues. The contract has come back with a opportunity, what's called a value engineering force. He has an alternative for us to consider that may save us money and time. And again, we're evaluating that right now to decide how to proceed. Elwood Road at Kingsdale, Kingsdale Swamp. Again, that closure began about a week ago. They've shut the road down. They're starting to demolish the bridge. And again, we're anticipating, I don't remember, in eight months maybe, on the closure of that to completely rebuild that bridge. Shoulders Hill and Route 17. Again, that's another one of those ones. We've been very challenged with the utility companies. We got Dominion out of the way. We struggled with Verizon. We've still got some issues with the gas company, with some of the fiber-optic companies. We believe we're just about to the point that that's going to move forward. We have a bid in place that we can afford, and we're just held up for that la, we got to check that last little box for VDOT about having the utilities out of the way. And by the August 15th, we will be, to be a no or a go, no-go. But we believe at this point, we're going to make that deadline, and we will be a go, and we will authorize construction. And that will start here in the early, late summer, early fall. Certainly, Route 58 corridor improvements in Manning Bridge Road. That's heavily under construction. One of the things we've talked about is we're getting ready to transition out of Phase 1 into Phase 2. And Phase 2 is where we're going to take all the traffic, both east and west, and shift it to the north side of the median so that that traffic runs head-to-head in there, and it gives the whole southern half of the road. As we have progressed and dealing with issues, we've actually modified that slightly so it's going to kind of be a 1A, 1B, 2A, 2B. The split is going to be right there between Falk Road and Grove Avenue. So everything from the west of that, we're going to shift in about a week, get them all over. You may have noticed they've already started down towards Councilman Johnson's end, working their way back on the, on the south side of the highway. The piece up there where all the businesses are, again, that's going to be a little bit slower, but we didn't want to slow the rest of the project up. So that's why we've deviated slightly, but we think that's going to keep us on schedule and in budget. And again, that's moving forward. Nansen Parkway, traffic signal light improvements. That was a project to coordinate the traffic lights and interconnect them. Going along really well. We've just unexpectedly ran into a conflict with Verizon. And again, working our way through that, we believe we've got a solution, and that will finish up here shortly. Same with Bridge Road. You've seen a number of construction items going on out on Bridge Road. Again, putting new fiber optics in, putting some new variable message boards up. We ran into a couple of issues on some conduits on some bridges that turned out they had problems in, and we're trying to work around. And again, that's where the material submittals comes in. We're looking at some alternatives to keep that project going, but that's moving smoothly. Suffolk Bypass ITS, again, that's just another project to bring fiber optics all the way around our bypass, put some cameras up, put some signs up, put some sensors up. Again, ultimately, we will have a citywide network. Kind of goes back to the traffic operations center I talked about in the first slide. But again, those meet, the pre-construction meeting is being scheduled, so we have a contract to ready to go. Portwood Boulevard sidewalks, we're finally done. Absolutely, Vice Mayor, we're finally done. I, I asked a guy what took him so long to take the barrels down. I said, you've been done. Take the barrels down. Let's let everybody know we're finished. So we finally got those down. We did a walk-through this week. I think there's a couple of punch item list items left in there. There's one driveway that they poured incorrectly. We're going to how to fix. But other than that, that project is complete, and that's been a good project. Downtown Suffolk drainage improvements, that's the work starting in Washington Saratoga, going down Saratoga and up Jackson. Again, progressing very well. They will soon, very soon be starting on digging the BMP pond as they make the corner around there. Our goal is to try to start putting some of the curb in back and getting some of the streets restored so that we just don't have the entire block messed up at this point. But there's still a couple of issues in there with other utilities that we're trying to deal with before we completely button the street up and put the final asphalt down. Some new projects that are upcoming. Again, we've talked about widening of Godwin Boulevard out there from the bypass out to Kingsfolk Road from four lanes to six lanes. Associated with that, the state also funded us for the diverging diamond interchange there at the bypass to make all of that work better. We've also received funding to widen Bridge Road from essentially Windward Lane where our project is now stopping towards Harborview Boulevard. I would say to Harborview Boulevard, but certainly Harborview Boulevard ultimately is going to need some additional work. That traffic signal is getting to the point is not quite what we need there. So again, we're going to go as close as we can, but we don't want to do anything we've really got to tear at in the future. There's two traffic signal timing upgrade projects upcoming. Again, different parts of the city. So over these three projects I mentioned, we will essentially re-time all the signals in the city. We're still working on expanding our railroad warning system. So this was originally envisioned to be the downtown system that you kind of see downtown with a couple of signs. Our goal in this is to expand and ultimately put it to where we can broadcast this out via cell phones for our driver in addition to the physical signs that we have at different places. The non-median break improvements on 58 is actually dealing with some of the crashes we have out there where people are running off the road and running into the large trees and into those big ditches along the six-lane highway. That ultimately is probably going to be worked with the SIPSA flyover project so that we can combine the two and hopefully get almost that entire corridor with guard rail to hopefully keep people out of those fixed objects that's being so hard on them. As we talk about our ARPA projects, American Rescue projects, just a quick update, Lloyd Place in Rosemont. Again, we are working on South Capitol Street, now planning to have that finished by the end of this year, and Tent Street. South Suffolk Pleasant Hill, again, we're wrapping up survey activities out there, utility locations, and inspecting the pipes to see what's in there, what we need to do. And a summary report of findings is going to follow in about a month's time for us, so we'll know what the next steps are. East Washington Street sidewalk and stormwater, stormwater infrastructure. Again, survey work is ongoing. We're looking at utilities. We're trying to inspect the pipes. That's one of the things when you start a project like this, you never know for sure what you're going to find till you get it entered, identified. And again, our preliminary design is planned for August or September this year. So again, we'll have a little bit of idea of how that's going to go forward. William Stone, William Stone is being run concurrently with the Department of Public Utilities. Again, the replacement of the wood curbing and water line. That one, the advertisements are in place, so we're advertising the project right now. Oakland Stormwater, again, under design, survey is ongoing. And again, that's going to be a joint project with Department of Public Utilities. But again, that's proceeding. And Pewsville, this is, again, kind of piggybacking on top of our capital project we already had in place with VDOT, giving us additional money. So again, offers are being made for parcels, and plats are being created to acquire the easements necessary down John Street. So we kind of took that at two-fold. One was we had acquisitions where we were buying properties. That was our first priority. And second behind that is get the easements necessary along the road in order to proceed forward. But all of that is proceeding forward. And with that, I'll pass it over to Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I like what Mr. Jones said about one of his buildings. He referred to it as being festive. So we're going to talk to you about some of our festive sewer pump stations. But I do like that. I'd add a couple of projects in here that were just recently completed, so they're not under design or under construction. First one is an abandonment of an existing pump station number one, which was along Pewsville Road, approximately in the 3,800 block. Like I said, the construction was just completed within the last month, six weeks. It consisted of abandoning pump station one and extending another 900 linear feet of 10-inch gravity sewer to pick up and serve that existing sewer area. So it was nice to take a pump station out of our, out of our lineup, reduce some maintenance. Pump station number 22, located on Mason Avenue, right in the bend, in the crook of the road there, kind of in the Mason Ashley area. That's a brand-new sewage pumping station, brand-new, but there was an existing station there. It was an exterior station without a building around it. It's had some exterior controls, had some issues. We got rid of that. One gratifying piece of this was that that old pump station often needed a mobile pump to back it up, which created some noise issues in the neighborhood. So all that's been eliminated. So it's been nice to bring that one to closure. Talking about few things that are under design, lakeside water and sewer system improvements, Phase 2 continuing on from Phase 1. This is in the military road area off of West Washington Street. The gist of the project is replacement of some aged water and sewer mains. That project is just about done, wrapped up in design, and we're discussing the, the opportunity to get that out to bid. Kings Landing Water Service Line Improvements. This is an area off of Godwin Boulevard behind Food Lion. This project is a water project. It's to replace some of the deteriorating water service lines, copper service lines, that have created some issues for us. Butler Lake Dam Improvements. This is a water, one of our water supply dams that's located in the Lone Star Lakes. This is an earthen dam. It's not a concrete dam that you would think, you know, you think of like a Hoover Dam. This is not Hoover Dam. It's a, composed of earth, roller-compacted earth. The scope of work is to clear and grub, remove some vegetation on the face of the dam, some re-grading, and then also to take that dam face and protect it from erosion, add some armoring. What I mean by armoring is some very large stones, some boulders to protect that, the face of that dam. Anticipated to get that out to bid in late, late fall. We're going through some permitting with several permitting and regulatory agencies now. Westport Water Pumping Station, this is on Holland Road, right across from Virginia Port Logistics Industrial Park. This project, not a very big one, but it is an important one. We're adding a couple of smaller pumps out there in the pump station. The intention there is to use those smaller pumps for mixing to there is to use those smaller pumps for mixing to increase our capabilities for disinfectant mixing, to improve the water quality within that tank. We're also going to go ahead and add some, do some upgrades on the chemical feed system out there to also increase some of the effectiveness of the disinfection in that tank. Pump Station 48 rehab. Pump Station 48 is one of our larger stations off of East Constance Road, kind of next to the Hilton parking lot. This project's new pumps and piping and electrical equipment. We're also, one of the things I want to point out on this project, we're going to do some wet well improvements to prevent ragging. And what I mean by that, I've included a, the upper photo is the photo of the station with a, with a pump, a backup pump staged out front. But that's our crew outside, sometimes going into some of these stations two and three times a week to pull pumps to remove quote flushable wipes from our system. They are not flushable. Yes, you can flush them down, but when they come to us, they, they wrap themselves into a rope around the rotating mechanism of the pump and our crews have to go out there and remove them. Otherwise, the pumps won't perform. So that's become a big issue, more than likely becoming a big issue because of COVID, more people at home. And actually was in Sam's the other day and I saw a whole skid of wipes where it's still listed flushable wipes on the side of it. Mentioned that to my wife. She gets sick of me talking about that. But anyway, flushable wipes, don't flush them down. Pump Station 17 replacement. This is in the Kilby Shores area. This is another one. It's very similar to Pump Station one where there's not an existing building around the station. So we're going to go ahead and build a brand new station down the road in Tan Oak Drive that we're working through the design on that. That's at about the 70, 80% design stage. Sewer Service Area 163, roughly in the South Main Street area and in that greater service area. This is the first of multiple planned phases. This is a brand new pump station along at where 424 South Main Street, where an existing house was torn down. We purchased the property. That's where the new pump station will be constructed. New force main, new water main and gravity main. That would be the first phase. Cedar Hill Cemetery, we have a 15 inch gravity line that runs around the backside of Cedar Hill Cemetery down in the ravine. There's some elements of that where the condition has deteriorated, an old liner that's failed. So we're working through the, the design is at about the 80, 90% stage right now. Unique aspect of this project is we plan to use some trenchless construction methods to not disturb some of the areas behind the cemetery. Moving on to the construction pending category, Kilby Avenue Water System Improvements. This one is replacing aged water service lines as well as the, the water main. Bids were received on this in June 28th. We're going through that right now. So very soon we'll be able to issue a notice to proceed on that. Pump Station 50 and 67 rehabilitation. These are in the Willbrook and Cedar Lake, excuse me, Cedar Lake Shores neighborhoods. Save some money. We packaged two pump stations together with very similar scopes of work. We're not taking the entire pump station down, but we are changing out the pumps, the piping and the electrical equipment. It's beyond its service life. Pump Station 46 located on Kansas Street. This one, very similar to 50 and 67, new pumps, electrical equipment and wet well rehabilitation. A fairly small station as far as they go. Pump Station 24, this is, you see this off of Holland Road if you're driving by. It's actually a pretty decent looking building for a pump station. It's in the Falk Road area, very close to reaching completion. Experienced some supply chain issues with some electrical equipment. We've seen that and I, I know Robert mentioned some things and I think Gary mentioned some things about some of their projects. Seeing a lot more of this as some of the bids are coming in, where contractors are mentioning supply chain backups. In this case, once we get the electrical and equipment in, the pump station will be completed. Pump Station 4 replacement. This is on Lincoln Avenue at the back end, at the dead end of Lincoln Avenue. This is a brand new pump station to be built behind the existing pump station in the, in the, in the Boston area. Then to talk about some of the ARPA projects, similar to what Mr. Lewis was speaking of with his department, the Chukatac Oakland area improvements, storm drain utility improvements are part of that scope. The topographical survey has been completed. The preliminary engineering reports in progress. We're expected to get that by the end of the month. Third Avenue, which Mr. Lewis referred to as Williamson, kind of using this, that's same project. This is the replacement existing water main with a larger main, also to improve some of the street drainage that is currently out for bid. Bid's coming in on July 14th. With that, if you have any questions for any of the three of us, we would be happy to take them. Thank you.
All right, Council. Questions or comments, Councilman Goldberg? Hold on a second. Let me get your turn on here. All right, give it a shot now.
No, he's not on.
One minute.
Now, now.
Now we got you.
Now you got me. Thank you very much. Well, first of all, do we have a number, a dollar amount of all that we have going on? Is there a number that we can put to this? It is unheard of. I mean, it is magnificent that we're doing all of this work. And I can only think of two things that we're missing. One is the community center up by the library. And number two, I'm interested in the curb and gutter for the other parts of, of the downtown district. But I wait because you've got enough on your, on your, your ticket right now. But I'm very impressed with what you're doing and how you're getting it all done. And I do know for a fact that the, a supply chain is a real issue. It has been with steel and other things. And the only thing I've heard recently is that lumber prices have been coming down. So that's, I think that's a maybe advantage for us too. But other than that, I just commend y'all for all y'all are doing and keeping your arms and hands around it and bringing it in on budget and all the other things that y'all are doing. I'm just totally impressed and I thank you for it.
Councilman Fossey.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I got a question for Robert. Just a couple of quickies here for you. One, the signboards that are going up on 17.
Yes, sir.
What are they actually going to do? What is going to be their function?
They will allow us to give traffic advance notices of other things, like if you're coming from, say the Bennett's Creek area headed towards 664 and there's an incident on 664, we will give people advance notice that something's ongoing and they have an opportunity to try to redirect themselves in a different direction. So it's more informational, traffic informational. We're still coordinating with VDOT where we may be able to partner with them and get some of their information again. But it's part of a bigger regional idea of trying to give people as much information as possible so they can make smarter decisions as they travel.
The only one that I see, and you may correct me on this, is the one in front of the AAA building right there on 17 in the median is where the first signboard's going up.
Yes, sir. And I believe there's one other and right off the top of my head, I can't remember exactly where that foundation is going in. But I believe there's one back towards Harborview. Or we have one planned that maybe we've held off because of the other construction ongoing. But I think there's two boards associated with that project.
The other thing is the 17, Route 17 widening, you just talked about coming down from where you're going to stop to go down toward Harborview.
Yes, sir.
Is that both southbound and northbound?
Yes, sir.
Are we taking in Bernie Howell Way Turn Lane into that?
We, we have it under advisement at this point. Certainly there are some challenges there because of topography and impact to private residents, but that is being reviewed at this point to see how we can best accommodate.
If we're widening 17, it would only make sense that we start looking at making that right hand turn for them to get in there a little better than what they have.
Yes, sir.
Let's talk about these wooden curbs that I just keep hearing about. I had an opportunity to drive through a neighborhood here in Riverview and I see wooden curbs that look like we're back in the horse and buggy stages. What is there, is there any opportunity that we're going to see those folks that have been asking for some kind of a curb other than a wooden two by six or two by four, whatever's laying in roadway? Are we ever going to see that corrected?
So that's the historic curb that's been in these neighborhoods. And we've got a couple of concerns, couple of issues with that. The biggest being the funding side of how to replace those. So generally, most of the road maintenance is done, is done through the VDOT maintenance program. VDOT gives us money and very clearly says we can maintain what exists, but we cannot improve. And they've been very clear that we can't take the wood curbing out and put the concrete curbing back, even though common sense would kind of tell you it's a little bit bigger investment in the beginning, but it saves you a lot of money over the long haul. So at this point, we don't have that opportunity. I have worked with another member of council to review some of that and gave them some budgetary numbers to where if that's something council desires in the upcoming CIP, we could put together a program where we start a process of going neighborhood by neighborhood, street by street, as council may dictate, and start putting aside some money to maintain those, to correct those, take the wooden curb and add and put the concrete back.
Okay. I appreciate all of your work in this endeavor to put all these projects up on the board. The only, I'm done, Robert. The only thing that I would say is for Gary, you know, I hate to be the guy that beats anybody up, but I'm just totally complex by the fact that it's taken so long to get design plans for some things, but other things, design plans seem to go rapidly. You know, we want to put a park thing down here where the library's going, that's going rapid. But yet we got a library that's been on a back burner for a number of years, a fire station that's not been completed, that should have been already on the board. And it's just, some of the stuff's dragging its feet. And as we drag our feet on these, and I'll call it dragging, somebody else can call it what they want, it's going to cost us more and more money, money in the long run to complete. So we've got to find a way to do something about the design process so that we can get the design process moving a little quicker. So these projects will cost our citizens less money in the future. This is absurd to be two and three years out to get, get a building, even get dirt moving. It's, it's, I don't know, I just think it's, it's not heard of everywhere that I've been around. So I'm just wondering, we need to work on that. But otherwise, I appreciate your efforts. You've all done a great job. I just would like to see some things tightened up a little bit. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I, the, the one thing I'll share with you from the highway side of things, most of that goes back to who has the review and approval. And that was whose dollars are we spending? Certainly the federal government puts a lot of regulations on us, a lot of reviews. When it's state money, it's a little less, but it's still a lot of reviews. So again, we, we just got hurdles we had to jump in order to be able to spend their money. So we are cognizant of that and trying to do everything we can to keep these things moving as expeditiously as possible.
I, I realize there's a lot of fingers in it. There's wetlands, there's right of ways, there's everything in the number to, to get to where we're going. But it just seems like even with that, it takes us a long time to get there.
Yes. So just, just really quickly, just the other day, we were at a meeting with VDOT and some of the environmental rules are now changing and there's a bat that may actually slow traffic, slow construction down to where it is only four months out of the year that we can do clearing and grubbing because of this bat. So again, those are some of the challenges we're facing.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, if I could add on some things Robert said. And I think as you listen to Paul and Robert, what, what we heard there were several projects that they're working together on. And where we're taking advantage of doing utilities with street improvements. And as we talked about Third Avenue, we'll talk about that real quickly. We have an opportunity to do the water main with the wood curb. As we talk about Kilby Street, I think that was one of the projects, Paul, that we did a water main or getting ready to do the water main on. That has wood curbs that be able to potentially address, I think, in that, in that project. But as we move ahead in some of these neighborhood projects, you have military over there on Lakeside Phase Two. And, and that street's going to be torn up with water and sewer. So there is an opportunity here as we jointly work on these projects. And I'm going to say nibble away at some of the wood curb issues as we move ahead. The other thing, as we talk about projects moving, as recall, some are our big dollar projects, the library, the fire station. We have the last CIP money, or really with the library, we got another year of CIP money coming on that too. But with the last, on the fire station 11 is in, in the CIP this year, which just became effective July 1. And of course, we're using some there for the Route 17 special taxing district. So since it sits up in there. So we have funding and of course, material delays obviously during construction, but trying to move these projects along, a lot of it's got to coordinate with the funding that we have in our CIP. And that's where we had in the past couple of years. So just want to add that.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, sir. I'd like to give you a kudo. I think we're doing a great job. It seemed like a lot of work going on. And one thing about it, I know about Gary is that he gonna make sure we do most of our time, budget's there and he gonna do a good job. Had to do nothing over. I appreciate that, Gary. Mr. Lewis, I want to ask you a question. You know I had one for you.
Yes, sir.
I just want to know, did you talk to the lady about them houses yet? Were you discussed one time?
Pewsville?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We're in contact with all of those property owners. In fact, we've already closed on one property. It's not the house. It's one of the vacant lots, but we've already closed on one of those properties in there.
Well, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Good. Thank, thank you, sir. Anyway, just a comment. Y'all don't have to come back up. There's a lot that's going on here today from all three of you that, projects that's in the pipeline for the future. A lot of them is drawn out for a few years and some is really right on schedule. And I think it's great to be able to get this type of information out to the public because there are a lot of questions being asked about some of the projects that we are doing and where the money is being spent. So this to give them an overall picture of three departments, of projects that's in the budgets that's being worked and the timeline that they are set to try to be completed. And I think everyone know that with the economy, the way that it is and materials being short, I think everything is being set back except time. But I think everybody's doing the best that they can to try and meet the, the goals and the budgets that we have put before you. But it's a lot, damn like Councilman Goldberg just stated, it's a lot on our plates. We got a lot of heavy lifting to do in the next few years. So we got to really stay focused on where this money is being spent and how it's being spent. And water, with that, you have a lot of big projects going on. I hope that don't increase, want to be where we're going to have to increase water rates. So whatever we're doing, we need to make sure we're keeping that down. But don't come back a little bit later and say, well, I need to increase the water rates by, because we got all these projects going. Hope you anticipate that when you're making these projects come online. Thank you, sir.
I knew you thought I was going to say that, right? Did. Council, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll wrap it up. I want to thank all three of you for your presentation. It's, it's quite obvious and nobody can dispute that we've got an abundance of projects going on. And when I look at them, you know, what I look at really is an equitable distribution of our resources. When I look at where those projects are occurring throughout our city, whether it's east, west, north or south, the money is being spent in the areas on the projects that need to be done. And obviously we're going to do them as, as quickly as we can based on resources, resources of time and resources of money and resources. There's other issues that we're talking about in regards to supply and other circumstances that are beyond our control. I've, I've often get comments, people say, well, seems like we're doing a lot of building and you guys aren't doing anything. You're not spending any money on infrastructure. Well, I beg to differ with you. When you look and see what we are spending on infrastructures on an ongoing basis. And we're constantly doing that, constantly analyzing, you know, where the need is, where we can get the biggest bang for the buck, if you will, and doing it as expeditiously as, as possible. Gary said he was up here and he dated himself a little bit. I can't remember what you were talking about specifically, but I'm really going to date myself. The Bennett's Creek Rec Center, I mean, I was actually in the reserves there for about seven years. I remember when that building was built, when it was new, it was in 76 or 77. And I'm upset with the army that they got that many issues with it. You know, it's one of those free deals. We might have looked at differently had we known what we had to contend with. I mean, I am interested in what they did with the arms rack in the front. We walked in the front door and everybody had their M16s or take it home and use it as a bomb shelter or something. I'm not, not exactly sure. And also as far as dating myself, we talk about Cypress Pool upgrades. My youngest son was the first lifeguard at that pool when he was 16 years old. So he's now 43. So that'll put everything a little bit into perspective. And he loved it. He said it was one of the best summers he ever had out there as a lifeguard. Downtown, you know, we talking about by summer of 2020- Downtown, you know, we talking about, by summer of two thousand twenty-four, I don't think you're going to recognize downtown. I mean, if you can just envision it in your mind, with the festival center, all those buildings gone, all the buildings around the library that are there now, once they start coming down, the library itself, I just, I think everyone is going to be pleasantly pleased, I think they're going to be actually astounded at what we're able to do. And with that building, I honestly believe we are going to be able to attract a lot of private investment. I think you're going to see property values going on, I think you're going to see folks coming from other localities, and what we want to do is have downtown become a destination. We want people in Norfolk to say, let's go to Suffolk and go shopping, let's go to Suffolk and grab a bite to eat. And this is our ultimate goal, and I believe we're going to get there. When you look at what we're spending money on, it's a lot of quality of life issues, it's transportation, it's parks and rec, it's safety. I don't see any frivolous spending going on, some project pie in the sky projects. I think we're spending our, our tax dollars wisely. I want to thank the manager and all his staff for their due diligence and everything they do every day. I think the manager alluded to this before, you can tell we're really growing by the number of pump stations we have. So I'm just curious, how many pump stations do we have now, Paul?
Hundred fifty.
How many?
Hundred fifty square, one hundred fifty.
A hundred fifty pumps, how many pump stations were here when you started?
Sixty-eight.
Okay, I rest my case. So our next economic development report, we need to actually let everybody know how, how we progressed in the way of pump stations. So thank you for everything that you do, and I think that concludes our, that staff, no, we got another one?
No.
No, I got another staff report?
I was going.
God, give me a break. Okay, that concludes that staff report. We have another staff report, we have public safety staff update. Mr. Manager, please provide another review.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Police Chief Alfred Chandler will provide the update.
No, concludes that staff report. Sir? Yes, we got books, we got, no, we don't need books. Don't need books?
That's just for you. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of council, I'm here before you to provide information concerning safety around our city. I would like to focus today's conversation on our Marine Patrol and our School Resource Officer Program. In our quest to keep our city safe and secure, we believe that our waterways have to be a part of that conversation. There are many citizens who enjoy the beauty of our city from the water, and we have a unit dedicated to promote water safety throughout, through education, interaction, and enforcement. Our safe boat, known as Marine One, is a twenty-nine-foot enclosed cabin vessel outfitted with two three-hundred horsepower Yamaha motors. This vessel is ideal for police operations and is equipped with emergency equipment, such as lights and sirens, navigational equipment, sonar, radar, and forward-looking infrared or FLIR systems. Marine Two is a twenty-one-foot Carolina Skiff with a hundred and fifty horsepower motor. This vessel is also outfitted with emergency equipment and navigation equipment. This smaller and more agile vessel is ideal for some of the more shallow areas of our waterways. The Zodiac is a twelve-foot boat with a fifty horsepower motor. We currently have two Wave Runner Sea-Doo jet skis, two eighteen-foot John boats, a twelve-foot, and, a twelve-foot Inmar inflatable raft. As with all aspects of our organization, our maritime police professionals attend schools to ensure that they are comfortable and confident in that element and ready to take action when needed. This slide shows some of the training that we require for our boat handlers. Our Marine Patrol currently operates during the summer months when we have the most activity in the water. And while on this assignment, officers patrol waterways, conduct enforcement actions, assist and with searches, rescues, and recoveries, render mutual aid to other agencies when requested, respond to water emergencies, such as vessels in distress, distress, and persons overboard. But they also provide a great community engagement opportunity during special events and other activities. Our Marine Patrol conducts water safety courses, and we maintain a canoe and kayak database within our city. This program provides a sticker to those who have kayaks or canoes that will aid us in identifying the vessel in the event that it is located unattended. It will also provide us with really important information that can help us in the event of a distressed or overboard situation. Continue to check the department's social media for more information on events we are planning soon for kayak and canoe registrations. Next, we turn to the department, to our Department School Resource Unit. This unit is extremely important to our city, as it provides safety to our most precious citizens. There is no question that your Suffolk Police Department is making every effort, every day, to keep our children safe. There is currently a full-time Suffolk Police Officer assigned to each of the three high schools and each of the four middle schools within our city. For the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year, we are adding an additional School Resource Officer to cover Turlington Wood School, where the daytime alternative program is located. These dedicated and highly trained officers serve first and foremost to keep our children safe. They are responsible for school security as well as special events. These officers are also assigned elementary schools to visit and provide police services when needed. But I want to assure that our citizens know that these are very special police officers. I am often amazed at the relationship and the interaction that our SROs have with our students. With all of the conversations about law enforcement and how we need to be better related to, with children, I can say firsthand that each and every day these officers spend in their respective schools, they are building relationships with these young people and breaking down barriers between cops and kids. So what's the benefit of having these officers in our schools rather than outrightting tickets or arresting law violators? More than anything else, if the unthinkable happens, we are prepared and ready, we are inside the school. This program is amazing in and of itself. We want to make sure that first and foremost, as I said before, that we are keeping our children safe. So being inside the school is, has a dual function. You know, obviously, first of all, we want to make sure that we have boots on the ground, ready to go if the unthinkable happens, but also, this program is an amazing source of pride to our department. To know that these officers can show children a different side of policing than what they may have heard is an invaluable asset to our department and, more importantly, our community. Our SROs are instrumental in, in presenting programs, such as gang resistance education training, or the GREAT program, Crime Stoppers, the Watchdog program, as well as a number of anti-crime campaigns. We also teach what's called Virginia Rules to educate our young people on the Code of Virginia, the rules and laws that will govern them for our, for the remainder of their life when they spend in the Commonwealth of Virginia. We are very proud of the efforts towards keeping our young people safe and our contribution to developing community, the community of tomorrow. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, questions or comments? Quite a group. Chief, I do have one question for you. Number one, I want to thank the department, and especially the R, SROs, for what they do in the schools, not only the police department, but I've also seen the sheriff's department interact with the students, and it's not only commendable, but it, it's obviously the thing to do, where we can reach the kids while they're at school, before they go home, before they get into neighborhoods. We discussed this also, we had our education committee meeting last Wednesday. Public safety, particularly safety in the schools, was one of the topics that we discussed, and I want you to continue to work with the school system. You know, I know we are to the extent, but I think we need, need to take it to another level, we need to make sure that we're coordinating all those efforts, that we're using our, all our resources jointly, in the way of threat analysis and the safety of each one. I, I don't know what kind of assessments we're doing on the buildings, but we need to expend whatever resources we have that are available to do what we can, any way we can in regards to, you know, safety of our students. It's just, you know, what we're doing, what we were doing last year and six months ago, I mean, it's just, we've got to, we've got to make sure that we're staying abreast of things and take it to the next level. But I appreciate everything that you're doing, and I know resources are always an issue, just like now, you've got your resource officers in the school, but you're going to have to leave to go to the elementary schools. I mean, at one point, you know, it'd be nice to have enough officers, so we can just dedicate one or two officers to do nothing, get you some more personnel, so you have a couple officers that could just do the elementary school, so your other officers can stay in those buildings all the time, things of that nature. So any, I think everybody up here is on the same page, so anything that you need, let this guy know, and he'll let us know, and we'll try to make it work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to motions. We have a motion to schedule a public hearing for July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two to receive public comment on an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property in fee simple and/or permanent and temporary easements, either by agreement or condemnation for the Pitchkettle Road realignment project, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson?
So move.
A motion for approval, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Goldberg.
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg, is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
The motion's been approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two to amend and reordating Chapter Twenty-Six of the Code of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, elections pertaining to the boundaries of precincts and burrows and polling places, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Williams?
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams, any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
The motion has been approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to cancel the August third, two thousand twenty-two City Council meeting, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. It's come to my attention that we have a heavy land use for August, and I recommend that we'd like to keep the August third meeting as scheduled.
Okay, Councilman Fawcett has made a recommendation to not cancel the August third meeting. Councilman Goldberg?
I'd like to second that motion, Mayor.
You actually don't need a motion.
I don't need, okay.
Just, just agree, because what, what we're going to do is if, if that is the will of council, then we just won't make a motion to approve the August third, and that'll make it go away.
We do agree with that. We have a lot coming up on that.
We do. Any other discussion? I also agree with Councilman Fawcett and Councilman Goldberg, based on the planning commission's meeting from the other day, they had about a four-hour meeting, and I think we're going to have a lot to contend with in August. Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yeah, my question is, what are we moving, the August agenda that we was going to have, August twentieth to the third?
Well, we haven't done, we haven't, we haven't done that agenda. So, yeah, we'll split it.
If we were to do that, we would be splitting it up instead of having all, one time. Okay.
Right. Is there any other discussion? So we'll ask for the record, is there any motion, is there a motion to approve the cancellation of August third, two thousand twenty-two meeting? And hearing none, then that motion will fail, and we will have our meeting on August third of two thousand twenty-two. Okay, now we move to our next motion, which is to schedule a City Council work session for Wednesday, July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, at four p.m., unless canceled, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval, Councilman Williams, Councilman Ward?
Second.
Second from Councilman Ward, is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
The motion's been approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers, and if we do, please explain the timing system.
Yes, Mayor, we have one non-agenda speaker. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before City Council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity or vulgar language. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. The first speaker is Ms. Ayana Johnson, two zero four Blackstone Lake, representing self, regarding health disparities in youth voting.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the council members. I'm Ayana Johnson, I'm fifteen years old, I'm also a native of Suffolk, Virginia, I attend Nansmover High School. I just competed at the Miss Virginia's Outstanding Teen Competition in Roanoke, and I just got crowned a little over a week ago, and I'm so excited that I got to take home the title and now represent the entire Commonwealth of Virginia. A part of the Miss America curriculum is to have a social impact initiative, so every girl has to choose something that they're passionate about, and they advocate for it throughout their reign. My social impact initiative is entitled Ayana's R E A D Initiative, which is an acronym that stands for the Readiness to Empower, Advocate, and Diminish Hopelessness in Chronic Illnesses. The reason why I chose the social impact initiative is because I was born with sickle cell disease, and that is an inherited blood disorder that affects approximately one hundred thousand Americans each year. That's in which your red blood cells are abnormally shaped, and that causes pain. Yes, sir. Which red blood cells are abnormally shaped? So the reason, that's the reason why I chose to advocate for the social impact initiative when I joined the Miss America organization, and at a very young age, I noticed the incongruity in the resources and the accessible information that was provided for those living in sickle cell disease and also in the hematology clinic of the hospital. So I volunteered with my mom at a very young age, I was in attendance at the sickle cell banquet annually, as just a guess, and I would go to health fairs and blood drives. But now, with all the work that I've gradually been able to increase, that's turned into me being an American Red Cross Blood Donor Ambassador, I've been able to develop my own five oh one C three nonprofit, I got to partner with the CDC to share my story about sickle cell disease, and that's a series that will be released in September. I also received a proclamation from Mayor Dumond that acknowledges September as Sickle Cell Awareness Month in the city of Suffolk, which I was very grateful to receive, and I am a patient at CHKD, Children's Hospital of the King's Daughters, I'm also their local ambassador, so I facilitate raising money for all the kids in the hospital, and that benefits all the kids in the hospital from every department. And I receive adequate, adequate care, because I am in pediatric care, but I'm unsure about the care I'll receive when I transition into adult care. There's approximately five hundred sickle cell patients in the Hampton Roads area alone, and we have the highest number of deaths. However, in the state of Virginia, there's no sickle cell disease treatment center. So that actually causes a lot of anxiety and fear within people that have sickle cell disease, because they're unsure where to turn to when they transition into that adult care. So as a title holder in the Miss America organization, I'm working to change that, and hopefully, one day, develop a sickle cell disease center, but for now, I turn to my government leaders to see how I, they can help me advocate for underrepresented health disparities. And now that I'm going to be representing the entire state of Virginia, I'll be attending Miss America's Outstanding Teen, and just a few short weeks in Dallas, Texas, and my mission is just to convey to the judges my outreach that I've been able to have, my message and my story. So as a title holder, I'm aware of what's going on around me, because I'm representative of not only the state of Virginia, but Miss America and that organization as a whole. So I follow politics, I encourage other young people and people my age to know who their government leaders are, and educate themselves on who they are and what they advocate for, so I turn to my leaders to support me and create. So I turn to my leaders to support me in creating more public education, awareness, and ultimately access and treatment to those with underrepresented health disparities. So as I head to Dallas, Texas for Miss America's Outstanding Teen, I just asked for support from the City of Suffolk where I was born and raised. And I'd actually like to request to meet with the mayor eventually and just get to eventually talk more about sickle cell disease and what we can really do to push this social issue. So, thank you. And I'll be open to taking any questions from the city council.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to new business. Madam Clerk, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
There are no additions, Mayor.
With that being said, are there any, any new business that require the action of city council for consideration? Hearing none, we'll move to announcements and comments. And at this time, I'll ask if Media and Community Relations Interim Director Jennifer Moore has any announcements, and I think she does. Just taking a guess.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. I do have announcements this evening. Both the Suffolk Police and Suffolk Fire and Rescue Departments were recognized on June 9th by the Hampton Roads Chamber Valor Awards. These deserving men and women were recognized by putting their lives on the line every day to keep our community safe. This event gives the business community the chance to say thank you to those who make Hampton Roads a safe place to work, live, and play. Join us for the ceremonial groundbreaking event to celebrate the $35 million public-private investment that will bring broadband internet to the rural underserved areas of Southampton County, Isle of Wight County, and the City of Suffolk. The Virginia Telecommunication Initiative, or VATI, prepares communities to build, utilize, and capitalize on telecommunications infrastructure with the goal of creating strong competitive communities. The groundbreaking event will be held Thursday, July 14th at 11:00 AM and members of the public are invited to attend. The Suffolk Commonwealth Attorney's Office is hosting a back-to-school drive on Saturday, August 20th at the College Drive Walmart. All supplies collected will support students attending schools in Suffolk. Suffolk Parks and Recreation has partnered with Bon Secours to bring the Care-A van to Suffolk. This mobile medical van will offer free medical services that provide general medical care to uninsured adults and children at the East Suffolk Recreation Center located at 138 South Sixth Street on July 6th and July 20th from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM. Services include routine evaluations and treatment of common acute illnesses as well as sports physicals, children's health insurance enrollment, and health education services. Medical and conditions, medical conditions that are beyond the team's scope of care are referred to another care setting. To schedule an appointment, call 757-889-5121. Exciting news to share out of the Suffolk City Attorney's Office. Stephanie Pugh, Assistant City Attorney, was the recipient of the Southampton Roads Bar Association Public Practitioner of the Year Award. She was presented this award at the Hampton Roads Bar Association's annual meeting in Norfolk. Congratulations to Stephanie. Sorry, I just realized I skipped a page. Sorry about that. Suffolk Project Lifesavers' search and rescue debut. It's debuted the aerial Kenda Scout drone at its dedication on Monday, June 27th. SPL board members purchased the new $10,000 piece of public safety equipment and turned it over to the Suffolk Fire Department to use in the search efforts for at-risk clients enrolled in the program. Clients including minors and adults have been diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease, autism, dementia, or other behavioral disorders. The drone is used to locate clients who may have wandered away from home or strayed into potentially dangerous places. Join Suffolk Tourism in a partnership with the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts as they proudly present the Summer of Adventure at the Center. A series of three blockbuster adventure films, Jurassic Park, the second in the series, roars its way onto the screen Sunday, July 17th. Admission is $2 per person and the movie will begin at 2:00 PM. To purchase tickets, please contact Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts at 757-923-2900 or visit sufficenter.org. Suffolk Commissioner of the Revenue, Susan Draper, is offering two drive-through, high-mileage adjustment events. If you own a passenger car or light duty truck that is a model year of 2003 or newer and that has over 15,000 miles per year in mileage, you may be eligible for a reduction in your car tax. The first event will be held on Wednesday, July 13th from 3:00 to 7:00 PM in the parking lot of the North Suffolk Library located at 2,000 Bennetts Creek Park Road. The second event will be held on Tuesday, July 19th from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM in the parking lot of City Hall. For additional information, please call the Commissioner of Revenue's office at 757-514-4260. The Kingsborough Guardrail mural is complete. One might not think of a roadside guardrail as a canvas for artwork, but keeps Suffolk beautiful in the Suffolk Arts League. With local artists, Katrina Sayward would disagree. At over 100 feet long, the Kingsborough Guardrail runs between East Comstance Road and Orchard Avenue and is now a beautifully designed public art installation for all passerbyers to enjoy. Suffolk Festivals, Inc. is pleased to announce that the 44th Annual Suffolk Peanut Fest is slated for October 6th through 9th at the Suffolk Executive Airport. Richard Bradshaw, longtime volunteer and 2022 festival chairman, selected this year's fest theme, Broad Stripes, Broad Stars, Bright Stars, and Patriotic Guitars, a tribute to our heroes in the red, white, and blue. In honor of this theme, the festival will proudly host Tunnel to Tower Foundation's 9/11 Never Forget Mobile Exhibit. This unique mobile exhibit serves to honor and preserve the legacies of first responders who lost their lives on September 11th, 2001. For a complete schedule of events and information, visit sufficpenetfest.com. Suffolk Mosquito Control would like to remind horse owners that it's time to protect from eastern equine encephalitis by getting your horse vaccinated. If you have already vaccinated your horse, you may only need to maintain protection with a booster. Suffolk Public Works advises caution that conditions are right for the possibility of harmful algae bloom to form in ponds and slow-moving waterways. A bloom is a buildup of blue-green algae or cyanobacteria that creates a green, blue-green, white, or brown coloring on the surface of slow-moving waterways. Contact, contact with a toxin produced by the bloom can make people and pets very sick. When in doubt, keep out. For more information, call Suffolk Public Works at 757-514-7627. With the warm weather returning, this means the return of mosquitoes. The Suffolk Public Works Department Mosquito Control Division is offering free mosquito dunks to Suffolk residents to assist in limiting the mosquito population. Placing these dunks in stagnant water areas is a common practice to eliminate mosquito larvae. The mosquito dunks are available to Suffolk residents and can be obtained at a variety of city offices listed on your screen. For more information, call 514-7609. And after our very successful inaugural edition last summer, Suffolk Tourism is pleased to bring back Suffolk Suites Week 2022. Taking place July 16th through the 23rd, this annual promotion showcases, showcases the tastiest desserts that Suffolk has to offer. From simply sweet to deliciously decadent, Suffolk Suites will highlight our best local culinary temptations. No coupons, vouchers, or tickets are needed. Simply order from the Suffolk Suites menu at each participating eatery. For more information, please visit dininginsufficva.com. Calling all community leaders, it's that time of year again for our annual Suffolk National Night Out. Registration is currently undergoing, ongoing for neighborhoods and groups until July 15th. After registration closes, a list of where the party's at will be posted on the National Night Out website at sufficno.com. All registered communities will receive a free event starter kit and access to City of Suffolk resources to ensure the successful planning of their events. National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. Furthermore, it provides a great opportunity to bring police and neighbors together under positive circumstances. Together, we are making community safer. Together, we are making communities safer and a more caring place to live. Join us on August 3rd as we celebrate National Night Out across the City of Suffolk. For more information, contact Jennifer Moore, National Night Out Chairperson, at 514-4104. And just a quick reminder that Suffolk 2045 Comprehensive Plan is still underway. The Comprehensive Plan is a long-range guide for land use, housing, transportation, parks, and open space, economic development, and more. The Comprehensive Plan Community Feedback Survey is live now and the deadline has been extended through July 15th. The survey is available in English and Spanish. Community members can also pick up their paper copies of the survey at Suffolk Public Libraries or City Hall. The survey is online as well at suffic2045.org. And lastly, on your screen, there are a variety of ways for residents and businesses to stay connected to the City of Suffolk. Thank you and have a good night.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll now move on to announcements from city council. And I've had a request from Councilman Goldberg to speak first. And we're going to go ahead and honor that request. Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate the young lady in the back of being a sickle cell queen of the state and going off. I know you'll serve us well. It is a very serious illness and I wish you all the, everything to try to find an answer to this and heal. Because I remember many people that have had it and it's very dangerous. And I understand your, your quest. So I just want to congratulate you. Mayor, the reason why I asked to speak first, I had prepared some thoughts and I put them aside. I want to speak on something that all of us received, I believe, a letter or a note that came to City Hall, came to the clerk's office. It was a letter that was sent to us. Most of the time, letters like that I don't pay much attention to. I put them aside when I think they have no, no meaning, no really, nothing really much to them. But on this one bothered me and it's been bothering me for three weeks and I wasn't going to say anything. I was going to let it go, but I'm not going to let this go. I'm not going to let it go and I'm going to bring it up to you now. All of us on this council from time to time have, have had, we work hard. People call you to ask you to do things. You try to help out as best you can. It could be something very simple or it could be something very difficult that you have to work with the city manager's office with to get it accomplished. Many people don't know all the things that, that all of us do, the efforts that we put into trying to help our citizens, our constituents. Well, one of our constituents and one of our neighbors, I'm not going to name the person because I don't think that's proper. But I want him, I want that person listening. I hope that person is listening right now. And I'm going to bring up a, a, a name on our council right now. He probably would not really want me to do this, but I'm going to. Mainly because he's, he's, he's an honorable gentleman who tries to serve his, his constituents in his borough. And this is Roger Fawcett. Roger has been going through a very difficult time. We all know that. He's had all kinds of treatment. He has more coming up. But he has been, but he has been on the job during the whole time, trying to take care of his constituents, doing the things that we do. We just do. He's not missed. As you've seen, he's been on virtual with us. He's even here tonight, which I didn't expect. And I think that's just fabulous that, that Roger was able to be here tonight. But this individual who wrote, made a comment that we should kick Roger off the council because he's sick and he can't come to the meetings and he can't do his job anymore. Now, I find that horrendous. Horrendous. And I'm speaking out about it. I hope that person is listening. I'm calling you out. I am absolutely calling you out. This gentleman has worked through illness and I would do that with anyone on this council if you were doing the same thing, working through an illness and still trying to help your constituents in serving your city. I'm disturbed by this. I find it, I really would hope that the person would send in an apology. Simple apology and saying, "I miss." But I don't think that person's big enough to do that. And so I'm calling that person out and I hope they're hearing me tonight. And I support Roger and his effort. I know with our prayers, he's going to go through some more things coming up. And with our prayers, he's going to be well and he's going to get back to us and continue to serve his constituents as he has always done that. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Councilman Williams, we'll go ahead and move to you.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to say congratulations to the young lady. And if there's anything, and I speak for all of us, that we can do to, to help, please feel free to reach out to us. On, Councilman Ward and I attended the Chamber Leadership Exchange Conference in Charlotte, North Carolina. I must say it was a great and very informative event and I'm looking forward to sharing some of the things that we discussed with my fellow council members. On June 6th, I met with the Hollywood Jurico Civic League and they had some concerns, Mr. City Manager. I'm just going to mention a few. One of their concerns is the ongoing problem with speeding on Merrick Avenue. And I still haven't seen the signs yet for kids at play. If you can give me an update on that at our next one-on-one meeting, I would appreciate that. Also, stop signs on the corner of Clary's Drive and Sixth Street is something that they want to see. Of course, you and I will be meeting tomorrow on that. And they would also like to have Neighborhood Development Services do more code enforcement in the area. On July 5th, 2022, I met with the Serre Toga Philadelphia Civic League and they also had some concerns, just to mention a few. Some of their concerns was parking on the front lawns of the residence, overgrown grass and weeds, et cetera. They also would like to have Neighborhood Development Services do more code enforcement in that area. The community has some concerns about the current playground equipment and I talked to Mark a few minutes ago. So we're going to meet with some people over there. Again, the community would like to see public works. Street sweeper come through the area weekly to clean the streets. That's something that they rarely see and they would like to see more of that. Just to get an update on a request that I made back on May 5th regarding the vegetation growing through the fence across from Knight Street located on Spruce and Colloden, I'd like to get an update on that as well. And to the citizens in the Wellerville Borough, again, I want to hear from you. Please feel free to contact me. Our information, not only my information, but all the information is on the website. We like to hear from you. You are our eyes and ears in the community. Please feel free to reach out to us. With that, I'd like to say goodnight.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, I also like to thank the young lady that came up with sickle cell and it's a disease that, blood disease that sometimes I have a couple of people that I know and also in the family that have that. And so I know how serious it is. And for you to champion what you're doing, I really appreciate. God be with you. Anything that you think that only the council, me, myself can help or anything, way that I can get things that you need, you ask for requests. But I don't know what you, what the City of Suffolk can do and what this council can do. So my door is open for you and I'm proud of you because I know you have to take a medicine every month. You have to, you know, do things, you get, your bones ache and all this type of stuff. So like I said, I know that and matter of fact, you are real proud of and thank. Hope God be with you. For you to be concerned not only about yourself and others, that take a special person and to win what you have, you deserve it. Thank you so much for that and God bless you. Yes, I did go to Charlotte. Had a great time. Been in Charlotte like 15 years ago. What I see of Charlotte now is unbelievable. It was all about business. A lot of time I sit up here and talk about the future. Charlotte did it in maybe 15 years in a way they'd done it. 15 years in a way they've done it. I would like to even go a step further, and so we can tag team or find out, because what you see in Charlotte now is what was it, 15 years ago? They then took over, just took their city by storm. The young generations are involved, they got all kind of things going on, matter of fact, in a maybe a mile radius or so. You don't have to, you don't have to drive a car, you can just walk to the restaurants, wherever you want to go, museums, and they have one of the arts. I think that's very important. You ever see a large city, any city, they have great arts. Look that up. I know, they have great arts, and it's one of the things they strive on, it's one of the things that give money. Well, Bank of America then took that city, and everything you see, buildings, and they didn't name buildings, but Suffolk had the potential. Not only Suffolk, Hampton Roads had the potential. My attention was going, but I didn't think it would be that impressive, that the whole Hampton Roads was there, and they were trying to get lessons from that city of Charlotte. We can't do everything that Charlotte done. And one thing that I talked to one of the mayors, and he said something that stuck with me, he said, "We got to be the best of something. We got to be known, be the best of that. You don't have to have all of Charlotte have, but when tourists come, when people come, when people want to move, we got to be known for something. We got enough land, we got enough people, we got good people." It's about the future, and we talk about the projects, and the project mean that we moving. It's not the same old Suffolk no more, it's different ideas. And you see that for yourself when you say the pumps, they then doubled, you know? So we have, it was great, we had a great time there, and I'd like to see if maybe we can sit, I think big anyway, we need to take our city council down there to see it, see it as believing, I don't know, but who's that might be in the budget, something like that. I'm going to take my time tonight, I got a couple of things I want to talk about. So let me go ahead. One thing I wanted to share this, and like Congressman Goldberg said something, I'm going to say this. Thank you all for the, I don't mind thanking people, trust me. Thank you all, council, for what we did with that map. Tonight is over, I'm so grateful and thankful that the boundaries and the boroughs and the people are in fair, it's fair, I consider it fair. I thank the register office for doing the precincts, because some of the moves they made was good moves. That was fair. There are some places, yeah, they was there, but some places, it wasn't the best place for when you're voting for the people. They did, it was excellent. And I'd like to thank people who was involved with it, and William and everybody else, I thank you all very much, because I am pleased with that, very pleased. Thank you for that. Sometimes you get criticized for things that people just don't understand, and sometimes you come back and say you're sorry, but you look at them and say, "Yeah, okay." One thing about me is that I watch things closely without talking a lot, especially when you're in charge, especially when you got a board meeting, especially when we behind there, I'm looking at, let things, when you come out, this might be a little different. Once I get behind you, I'm behind you, regardless of what anybody say or how they feel. When you get to be 67, almost 68, you probably say, "Well, I don't care, I'm, you know, so what? I had a good life, I'm fine." We give credit to Louise Lucas, Tommy Norman, Emily, yeah, I'm sorry, Emily, but it's one more person, and I'm going to say it. Mike Dumman was the chairperson of the jail board, just before he was mayor. He worked so hard as chairperson. I mean, he worked hard for that money coming to Suffolk. After he became mayor, what did he say? "Man, I'm going to stay on the jail board." I said, "Man, stay on the jail board." He fought hard for that money on the jail board, his name not there, but he made sure he fought hard for that money coming to Suffolk. A lot of people sit and talk about this, that, and that, I don't care, but I know how he fought hard. He didn't have to be on the jail board, and the jail board is important because a lot of money coming to Suffolk. And Superintendent Smith does it well. We got a good jail board team. We don't run from problems, we solve them, and there's no problem that we don't try to do best for the people that are in jail. So I'm just, he didn't know I wasn't said it, but I have watched him, and it was well-earned the money we get, but he fought hard, his name not there, but he fought hard for that jail board money. That's one of the things that I picked up, and I know that. So I'd like to thank him for working that hard for that. You don't have to know, but I'm going to let you know. I wanted to say this here, a lot of things that I shared within the paper with my friend, I call my friend Councilman Goldberg, is about this land and all this developing stuff. I got a call from a person that's real intelligence, got a lot of property, and he can understand land law, he can understand what's going on. So I had to pass the buck to somebody, which I always do. I'm just concerned that I know it's about money, I know about capitalism, but I'd like to know more about land, because some of these people who pay taxes have been paid taxes and still paying taxes, they, some of them can't even sell their land. I don't understand all that. We got people who are in certain places, and I'll call it in Chucka Tuck, they got property, and people just come in. Some things ain't right about somewhere, something. Pewsville, I mean, we got, I just want to know what direction that I supposed to go or we supposed to go when it comes to this land. I want to, and I think we talked about, what direction we supposed to go? Because I really don't know, and I like to talk to whoever I got to talk to, city manager, but I wanted that question was answered for the man that called, and I thank Kevin, but I like to know that if he don't know, how many other people don't know? You know, yes, you got to have growing pains, I got that too. How many people don't know? I hear some councilmen say, "Yeah, we got to take it to the community, you're right." You got to let the people know. Some people don't know. It's not fair for, you know, they elected us, and then we don't know the answers of their question. I like to know some of that part, what's, what is it? Because everybody can be wrong when they got all that land there, and they can't do this, and they can't do that, and the developer come along, he can build whatever he want. I might be saying it wrong, but that's what, that's the way I look at it. So this man called me today, it's like, "I can't believe this." I would like to know more about it. And the other thing I want to say is, I don't want to step on nobody toes, I'm going to say it, like I always do. I was president of NAACP, every two president. Proud. Had no intention of running, I would have been there for 20 years, I love it. I want it be said today, tonight, I don't know, I don't have to vote on it, but we have to have a table. At the end of the, NAACP banquet is not fair, that we didn't have a table. I don't even think we had an ad. For the last time, when I've been on council, we had an ad or a table for the NAACP banquet. I had to call President Tyrone Riddick for a ticket. Some of y'all probably say, "Somebody know I'm upset," because we should support these groups, NAACP just fight for fairness. They don't fight racial, it's about fairness. And I don't see, and maybe in our budget, maybe we can do it next year, but I wanted to see, I got, I'll be on council two more years. I don't have, "Please don't text me, please don't call me, if they got a banquet ticket, Lou Ward is going." You don't have to ask me. I'm going to say it again. When they got a NAACP banquet, if we don't have a table, you don't have to call me, you don't have to ask me, I want a ticket. And I don't think it was fair that this city did not support that organization. And I called the city manager, and he did what he had to do, but I'm just saying, I just didn't see that in my years been on council, I always saw that we had a table. And another councilman was there, and we had a great seating, and I think we're far better than where we would have sat if we won a table, but I like to see the support of not only that group, but other groups who are in our city. With that, I say God bless.
Councilperson Butler-Ballot?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Ms. Johnson, congratulations on your title. I couldn't be more impressed, and I was going to tell you good luck in Dallas, but I think the good luck should go to your competition, because as far as I'm concerned, you're going to do really, really well. Thank you for representing the city, and I appreciate your comments tonight. Best of luck to you. I know 4th of July is over, but I just wanted to say I hope everybody enjoyed their weekend. I attended events in Criton Eclipse and also the downtown fireworks, and it was a great weekend all around, and appreciate everybody that worked hard to make it happen. It was nice to be able to be out and enjoy celebrating our country with the rest of the Jennifer mentioned it, but I brought my button tonight, I just want to make sure everybody remembers the 2045 Suffolk, it's Suffolk2045.org. You've got till July 15th to tell the city what you think. This is your opportunity, don't miss it. I encourage everybody to either go online, I have plenty of paper copies, if you need one, call me, email me. This is our chance to say what we want to see as far as the direction of the city. And again, just encourage everybody to do that. I'm very excited to share that the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services Board of Directors will be visiting the city of Suffolk on the 19th and the 20th of July. This is an organization I've been involved with for, I think this is my ninth year, and I'm really excited that the city of Suffolk is helping me host this summer visit, and I'm looking forward to interacting with some of the agriculture businesses in the area and enjoying some amenities in downtown Suffolk, so looking forward to that. Let's see, sorry, I have a funny list here. To all my farmer friends out there, it will rain again someday. I don't hear anything right now, but we're fingers crossed for rain tonight. It'll come someday, not soon enough for a lot of us, but know that everyone is struggling, and I feel your pain, and hopefully we'll get some rain here this week, we've got lots of good chances. So just fingers crossed, everybody out there, do your rain dance, please. And lastly, this is on a sad note, but I want to offer condolences to the family of Billy Whitley, who passed away this morning. Mr. Whitley is a well-known person in our community, he was the principal of John Yates back when it was a high school, beloved by many, many former students and coworkers, and was also on our school board. And the Whitley family has had more losses this year than a family should have, and this is just one more. So heartfelt thoughts and prayers to that family, and I know that the support of the community will be with you all as you go through this sad time. And with that, I'll say good night.
Councilman Johnson?
Ms. Johnson, I'm going to start with you too, because you seem to be the star tonight. But not only do you represent a wonderful platform, but you represent our children in our city, and we so appreciate what you've done. You're a pretty remarkable young lady, I can tell just from looking at you. So thank you, go out there and make Suffolk proud. We know you will. And I don't think there's a member sitting up here that if we can do anything for you, honestly, ask, and we will be, we will be there for you. With that being said, I want to just say briefly, Project Lifesaver, I don't know how many of you are aware, at the airport, they donated a drone, a $10,000 drone to our community, and it's pretty amazing what they've done, and I think the fire department is truly excited about having it, and anybody that has, has a loved one that could possibly get lost or forget where they are, this thing could save their life. It is really, really an amazing thing, and I hope they'll go out there and buy us three more. So for that, I just want to say thank you to the Project Lifesaver group, and anytime you can support it, we really should, it's a wonderful thing. The other thing I'm going to say, and I'll keep it really brief, is I've been sitting up here for about eight years, and I don't think I've ever known a time that I've been on council that we have been as well-informed as we are. I truly feel that way. The presentations that were made tonight by all of, all of the staff, by Mr. Moore, we, I think that this staff is trying to keep us informed, and I feel that, I feel like we are in a place that we haven't been at other times, so I thank you. I thank every one of you sitting here tonight. I may not always agree with it, and you can ask Robert Lewis, I get a little raucous, I don't like my roads being messed up, but I think we are very fortunate to have a staff that responds to the people of this city. And for that, I say thank you to the police chief, to the fire chief, to all of you guys. It's, we were very, very blessed to live in the city that we live in. And I say that because people of this city really care. I mean, and it's the truth. People care, the churches care, the residents care, and we reach out to each other all the time, and I just say it from a personal base, I've had a little surgery not too long ago, and I'm not lying to you, I bet I had 15 churches call me. And these are just regular churches that are customers of mine, they come in, and you know, we are very blessed. We need to lift each other up and support each other. That's why I agree with Mr. Goldberg, we lift each people up, we don't, we don't knock them down. So I hope that's what this council can bring. And again, I'm saying good things about staff tonight, so pay attention. I don't, I'm not always as nice, but I honestly feel like, Mr. Moore, we are as informed, and I hope that's where we're heading with everything. We want our people informed, we want to be informed, we want projects to move on. I agree with Mr. Fawcett on the library, get that sucker built. Let's hustle and get some things done so people know that we're sitting up here, and we're not here forever, so we need to hustle. So with that, I'll say good night.
Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just have a couple of comments. One, Ms. Johnson, who came up. You know, I want to applaud you for sitting through this whole entire meeting tonight. It's not always, you hit a good one tonight, it's not quite as long as we normally can be, but thank you for being here, and thank you for doing what you're doing and what you're trying to represent, not only Suffolk, but the state of Virginia and your community of your youth, and it's an important mission. I think there's going to be a lot of people that'll be paying attention to the very thing you talked to us about tonight, about the sickle cell program. So I'm going to just kind of keep track of where you're at, how you're going with things as you move along, and I wish you everything and all the luck in the world in your trip through. You know, I want to congratulate the Fire and Police Department on the Valor Awards. You know, the thing is, is we're well-represented in those Valor Awards. Those Valor Awards are top-shelf things that bring the best of our men and women to our city to be recognized throughout the Hampton Roads region. So congratulations Chief Chandler and also Chief Baraki for having such a good organization of people. We don't realize what these men and women do every day, every day, when you call, someone answers. So just when you see one, once in a while, it wouldn't be bad to just say thank you. Thank you for what you're doing, and I think that would be appreciated. Tim here just hit on the drone for Project Life. You know, that group put that together, and it's an expensive little proposition to buy a drone to be able to do the missions they wanted to do, but you know, I have two drones that I enjoy flying at times, and they're just remarkable, and what they can do is just getting more and more advanced every day. So if this does save a life somewhere along the line, that'll be a very significant thing, and maybe we can add more, and the fire department's operating this one, I believe. So there may be someday more coming along, and maybe police and sheriffs can get involved or whatever. But it's a good program, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that group for doing what they did. We had a good meeting tonight. Appreciate everybody's being here and your comments tonight. Will not be here on the July 20th meeting, it may be virtual if I'm allowed to do so. It may be virtual if I'm allowed to do so. So I look forward to that meeting and for further meetings, and I thank each and every one of you.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot going on. I would like to start out, Ms. Johnson, I've seen you quite a bit and you know, I'm always there for you in the sickle cell group and I try to attend most of the banquets that, fundraisers that are being held. And I have friends that worked with me that I know was going through those treatments and it's not easy. It's very painful and I adore you for your courage and the momentum that you have going out trying to promote what it's all about and being Miss Virginia. So we are proud of you and as everyone stated, we are here to give you all the support that we can and we keep you definitely in our prayers and the rest of, the ones that suffer from this disease, I know you're trying to raise funds to try to find a cure. And matter of fact, I got a letter from Dr. Whitfield a few days ago about the fundraiser. So we're gonna do it virtually this year, so people that's listening, if you'd like to support her and the sickle cell group, they are raising funds now to help support her and others. So I ask you to please support the sickle cell group as a, now it's part of Suffolk rather than the whole Tidewater area. Suffolk has its own group that, with the sickle cell. So again, congratulations to you and you have my prayers for you. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to our deputy city attorney, Stephanie, on her recognition. I think that she's a well-deserving young lady and whenever time you get flowers while you're living, it's, it's always great to smell them while you can, not after you passed on. So I wanna congratulate her as well. Just to talk a little bit about Project Lifesaver, I do serve on that board and this is a very active board and we have worked hard to fund this and it's through fundraisers and it does not cost a family a dime if they have to be treated by Project Lifesaver with a wristband. So if they get lost or get anything happen to them behind this drone, they can find it within minutes of time that they have reported missing. So whenever it comes up for fundraisers, please support it because we do this for the, for the citizen. The sheriff department, the police department and fire department all work together. That drone is for everyone working together and it's a team effort. So just not the board or Project Lifesaver that does it. The fire department has it, but we are supportive of them. So please support them whenever you can and when we are doing fundraisers. On the health, healthy bus that was in Suffolk today and will be back on the 10th, I hope that we can do a little bit better advertising, cause I didn't even know it was being held at East Suffolk until I saw it on television. It might've been, I might've missed it, but I didn't know it until I saw it on Channel 10 or 3 today that it was at East Suffolk today. So I hope that we can get better advertisement out when these things are taking place in the community. So people can be aware that it is available to them, cause there are a lot of people, I'm sure, that could participate in that as well. Children are out of school, so people are driving crazy. So we got to ask people to please be careful when you're driving in the neighborhoods and all and look out for the kids. We won't, don't wanna see any of our children get, get hurt. I'd also like to say to our public safety, police, fire and rescue, thank you all for everything that y'all do. Y'all do so much great work out there and people don't really realize the challenge that you all face each and every day. So again, I wanna just thank you all for all that you do as well. Some of you might not know, Mr. Jesse Trent, he used to be the CEO of Crocker Funeral Home and he passed away Sunday and he'll be funeralized here at the bomb on Saturday at 1:00. And he was head of the funeral home there, Crocker Funeral Home, and I just found out about it yesterday, but I was told that he passed on Sunday. So I'd like to mention him, he worked as a school teacher for years and then he also worked as a part of social service. So I'd like to send my condolences out to the family and to all the employees of the Crocker Funeral Home. I wanna say to Roger as well as what Councilman Goldberg said, I received that letter, it was very disturbing when I received it. I called Roger, Roger, he and I talked about it and I told Roger, just don't let that make him feel bad. We know what he's doing. So that was just something that, that was low, that was very low for a person that's going through illness and somebody would say something, write council members and ask them to do something like that. I mean, that just, just unbelievable that a person would, would do that. So I just want you to know, Roger, you have my prayers and support and I know what you've been the years that you've been here on council with me. So don't let that discourage you. Stay strong and you're gonna be fine. Okay? And with that... Yeah. With that, I would just like to say that the fireworks was great. I believe this is the largest crowd that I have ever seen on that waterfront. I'm telling you, I've never seen that many people. All, I mean, everywhere you looked, it was wall to wall people. So everyone enjoyed themselves, but there was a little bit concerned with what had just taken place in Illinois, a little bit scared, but everything, chief and all them was there to make sure that everybody was safe and, but I tell you, it was a great turnout and I think people wanted to get out of the house and it was very good. So again, thanks everyone for all that you do. Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'll wrap it up and try to be brief, but I wanna start off by offering my deepest condolences to the Whitley family as well. I guess we can call him a fellow Chucka Tuckian. But if there's anyone who deserved the name honorable in front of his name, that's what I would call him, is honorable and a true gentleman. And I know he will be missed and his family's been through a lot this year. And I thank you. I'm glad he was around to do what he did. I know when I, when I was first elected, I had a lot of conversations with him and just as genuine an individual as you ever wanna meet. The, we had the national night out kickoff at the visitor center on the 21st, so put the save the date, mark your calendars, August 2nd, national night out. I'm confident we're gonna be in the top five plus. So I'm looking forward to that. Hopefully it won't be too hot. I think the city manager always puts Sheriff Harris in charge of the weather, right? So if you don't like the weather on a national night out, it's too hot, that's who you complain to. On the 23rd, Suffolk Sister Cities had a fundraiser for Mercy Chefs to support the Ukraine relief effort in Nazem and Bruin Station, pretty well attended. I need to start drinking more beer so I can fully appreciate everything, but it was a good crowd, we brought the dogs, so it was all good. This was kind of an unusual couple of weeks for me, couple of weekends in a row. On the 26th, I missed the NAACP banquet. I'd been to 11 in a row, I missed this one, but I had a 50th anniversary on the 24th and my wife's birthday on the 26th. So I think the term is discretion is the better part of valor. So in that case, we'll have to catch you next year. We had our education committee meeting last Wednesday. I wanna thank our sheriff, E.C. Harris, for being there, our police chief for being there, also director of capital projects, Gary Jones was there. We had two topics that we discussed, public safety specifically as it relates to the schools and we also talked about options for the relocation of the school administration buildings. We will continue to have meetings as the need arises and I hope the school board and the superintendent's office attend our next meeting and avail themselves of the opportunity for that additional communication in a smaller setting. We're still gonna have, fully intended on having our joint meetings once or twice, twice a year, but I don't think there's any organization of any size anywhere that doesn't have committees, cause that's where the work gets done. With a smaller group brainstorming, keeping in mind that that education committee has no ability to vote on anything that can be done, it, other than the communication part and bringing back whatever ideas there are to their respective bodies for consideration. So I think in today's day and age, there's, there's more of a need for that today than there was yesterday, last week, last month and last year. So I'm looking forward to continuing to work together to do what we can collectively to benefit our, our school system and also all the citizens of our great city. I also toured Tidewater, Western Tidewater Free Clinic with the city manager on the 30th and I hadn't been there in a little while and they have definitely got it going on. I can't remember how many people, there was like 14,000 or something in a year maybe, but they're expanding their services. Yeah, they're expanding their services with additional dental, with additional eye care and also trying to address mental health issues as well, which is huge. And they're willing to reach out with anyone in the community. I even asked about possibly some mental health services, working with the regional jail and they were receptive to that also. So you know, I appreciate them for everything that they do every day. And on the 4th, that's my second, you know, there's no apologies, I'll just call them regrets, that on July 4th, I missed a couple of my favorite things. One is going to Eclipse and doing the parade, which I've done several years in a row, but we went out of town Friday, so I figured at least, I was trying to get 72 hours of just clear my mind. So we went out of town and I missed that and I also missed the fireworks at Constance Wharf, but I heard the same thing that everybody's alluded to, it was the best fireworks show yet. Ton of people there and very well done, so I thanked the manager for making that happen. And that's pretty much wraps it up for me for a couple of weeks. I do have a couple of quotes and they're kind of 4th of July related, if you will. Normally I just do one, but I got two short ones, cause I couldn't pick the best one between these two. One is a quote from Bill Clinton, our 42nd U.S. president, and that is, "There is nothing wrong with America that cannot be cured by what is right in America." Think about that for a second, there's nothing wrong with America that could not be cured by what is right with America. And I believe that, we just gotta take the steps to do it. And my second quote is from Nelson Mandela, and that is, "For to be free is not merely to cast off one's chains, but to live in a way that respects and enhances the freedom of others. For to be free is not merely to cast off one's chains, but to live in a way that respects and enhances the freedom of others." So I just thought they were two great quotes and I took little mayoral privilege and figured I'd do two tonight. With that being said, I understand that Ms. Johnson would like to get a picture with everybody on council. So I'm ahead of you guys, cause I already had one, so they give me two, so that you can't catch up, just no end of it. So after the meeting, if council doesn't mind, maybe we'll come right here in the front and allow you to get a picture. And if there is no other business, I would like to call for a motion to adjourn. Councilman Goldberg?
Move for closing, Mayor.
To adjourn, okay. Councilman Williams.
Second that.
We got a first and a second to adjourn. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Here are none, everyone prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion's been approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.